They should be just.
Okay, so, good morning, everyone. This is the regular Planning Commission meeting for Tuesday, August 13, 2024. If we can go ahead and call the meeting to order. Chair Kraschauer is unable to make the meeting today, so we will need to either select a temporary chair for today's meeting, or if you want, staff can just work through the agenda. So, at your pleasure.
I'd be fine with staff running this meeting, and we can select a vice chair next time. Hopefully, we can get some more members here in person.
Yeah. Okay, so, I'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. If we can all stand for the flag salute, please. Okay, Rebecca, would you go ahead and call the roll, please?
All right. Commissioner Henry Idica?
Sorry, I'm present.
Commissioner Jeremy Lindert?
Present.
Commissioner Carrie Johnson?
I'm here.
Commissioner Katie Satanovich?
Present.
Commissioner Maguire and Wagner and Kraschauer are absent.
Okay. The next item of business is to adopt the agenda as presented. Were there any changes to the agenda? Okay, hearing none. Can I have a motion to approve this presented?
Motion to approve as presented.
Is there a second?
Yep, second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, anybody opposed? Okay, so that's approved. Next item is business from the public. This is an opportunity for anyone to give a brief presentation about any land use planning issue or county concern that is not on the agenda. Rebecca, has anybody signed up to speak virtually? And not in person, okay? So today, then, we'll move on to our work session. There are no public hearings today. We have three items for your discussion and review. The first one is our ongoing work on the Clear and Objective Standards Project. And this month, we're going to be finishing up the items in Article Four, which are all our different zoning districts. And so there is, in your Agenda package, and I believe that's page two of your Agenda package, or three, we have the cover memo that's in there. We're looking at the development zones that are designated in the comp plan for development. These are areas where you will typically see a little bit more intense development happening, and we have a little bit more latitude in what we can and cannot do in those districts. But primarily, the changes, again, are centered around moving the permitted uses into the conditional, permitted and conditional use table, moving the standards in each zone, the setbacks, the building heights, the building coverage, into a table in each zone to make it a little bit easier to read and understand what the requirements are. And then, really, more to unify the nomenclature that we're using, so that it's consistent across every single zone. So it's not just one family house in one zone or a single-family dwelling in another to try and make that all uniform. A couple items of note that I wanted to point out. In Section 4.0600, that's the Arch Cape Rural Community Residential Zone, there's, in Table Three, there was language in the setback requirements and building lot size that was very confusing. I feel screwed down, there, right there. So you see that table. It spells out how big your lot needs to be with regard to the slope of your property. And at some point, it appears that this language was altered from its original, which is what we see in the RSA SFR zone. And so staff is proposing to put that original language back in, because the language that's here right now doesn't seem to make any sense. So we've just gone back to that original language, which is what it was in the beginning and what is still used today in the RSA SFR zone. So that was one change that was sort of deviated from the standard changes we were making. I think that was the only other change of note. And then, even though we are not looking at the conservation zones, because there's no housing allowed in them, we will be going ahead as part of this project and just doing the same process of putting the uses into tables and the setbacks and things into tables, so that there's consistency throughout Article Four. But really, the changes for this remaining section of Article Four, the zone regulations, were very minimal. And both David Cook and I, or, well, David's not here yet, but I'm here at least to answer any questions you might have, and David is too, so. And I guess, because I'm the chair, I have to say, do you have any questions? Sorry, forgot my role.
So I want to talk a little bit about parcels not served by community sewer systems. What's currently allowed? And as far as if something doesn't have a community sewer system or it does have a community sewer system in some of these rural communities?
Yeah, the same uses are pretty much allowed at this point. What will differ are the lot sizes. Because if you have community sewer, you can obviously go much smaller on your parcel size, because you don't have to have the drain field and the replacement area. But as you get out, especially in Napa-Swenson area where there is no community sewer, that's where the larger lot sizes will kick in, even though they're designated as a rural community. But the uses are pretty much the same.
What, I guess, what lot sizes would be allowed? I guess I want to get more specific on what lot sizes would be allowed, if you wanted to cluster or as far as a sub-type of a subdivision in one of those areas that doesn't have a community sewer system.
Okay, so if you're in the Napa-Swenson Rural Community Residential, I believe it's a one-acre minimum lot size. And so if you were to do a subdivision, which would be three or more parcels, a standard subdivision, you'd need three, four acres, basically an acre per house. I didn't bring my code with me, but if I remember correctly, I think the cluster subdivision regulations require a minimum of four acres to do that. And then, I'd have to go back and check the details, Carrie.
Okay, what I'm getting at is that if we're in a rural residential community where we've kind of designated that for housing, you may want to look at being able to go smaller than a one acre if it's not served by a community sewer system. Because it's unlikely that anybody's going to put in one of these type of community systems, but we've already designated that area for housing. I think that you can have a much smaller lot than one acre and still have an approved septic system and replacement area. And just like the entire city of Geerhart has much, much smaller lots that have approved, there's many different types of septic systems now that work on smaller lots. So I think that we may want to look at trying to shrink that down to allow for more development in those communities that we've already designated housing.
Okay, do you have an idea of what an ideal size would be to accommodate the septic, but still bring the lot size down?
I know on a 10,000-square-foot lot, you can easily get a septic system on there. So I don't know what that ideal size may be, but I think that's a hindrance to getting housing. I mean, if you have to have one acre, that's a lot of land for a house.
Right.
Especially if you're going to create a subdivision. And if you can create a subdivision with some smaller lots, it may be a way to get some more housing in those rural residential communities.
Okay. Okay, yeah, we'll go back and take a look at that.
Just so I understand, the only way you're going to get that way is in a subdivision, right? In these zones?
Yeah, you'd have to be a subdivision within those zones, like Napa has some of it. Jeffers Gardens has some of it. A lot of these zones have other issues, too, like they're maybe in a floodplain. That prevents it from ever having that. Just if, in the ideal situation, if you could create some lots that are smaller, still had a, or had the ability to get a septic system. And maybe that's what we put in there, is that it has to be, you have to determine that it has a septic approval for each lot. That could be the determining factor. Get a septic system on there.
Okay.
Because that's kind of one of the rules now, is you have to fit not only the original, but a replacement system, right?
That's right. You have to have a repair area. Pretty much two systems on one side.
Yeah.
And sometimes, the initial system is a simpler system that takes up more room, and the replacement system may be a more expensive, smaller system that doesn't take up as much area. So that's how you can fit two systems on one smaller lot.
Okay.
Anyways, that's, being this is a work session, that's kind of what I want to bring up. And that was one of my issues that I've seen as far as trying to, maybe looking at doing something in some of these rural communities. Because a community system is just unlikely. Still, to require a one-acre lot size, it's not practical, subdivision. Unless you could get some more lots out of that. Putting in all the infrastructure for just a one-acre lot, whereas you might be able to get more lots for the roads and water and power and all that that you have to put in, it just has to make economic sense to do it.
Does anyone else have any questions or comments about the draft changes to Article Four?
I have, I guess, a question. In some of the comments that were submitted in the back, they're pretty much all specific to Arch Cape, but I think some of it applies everywhere. What is the procedure, the thought process in these areas? A lot of them, you know, serve by some kind of a rural community water system, mostly run by a shooter. Is the thought in the past just kind of been that if the district signs off on, you know, yeah, we can supply water if you get your permit, and you let that kind of be the district sort of police itself? Or how does that work with future development?
Yeah, that's correct. So every time someone wants to build a new dwelling unit or any type of structure that will have a water connection in it, even if it's a shop with a sink and a toilet, you still need a sign-off from the water district or the water provider, whether that's a district or it's Water Resources Department, because you're off of a well or you have water rights to a spring. So we really, the districts are really monitoring their own capacity. And so it's their call to determine when they're reaching a level when they won't have capacity. And then, the water district also have to do a water conservation and management plan, which I think runs on a 10-year cycle with a five-year update. And that's where they lay out what they see as their projected need over the next 10 years, and then the steps that they're going to take to help conserve water and make sure that those needs can be met over that period of time.
Is it the state that makes sure that they're in compliance with that? Or how does that work?
Yeah, for the community water systems, it's Oregon Health Authority. And then, you know, wells and things, they don't have that same process. That just gets monitored through Water Resources Department. Okay. Any other questions or comments or thoughts, suggestions?
For the most part, simplifying the formatting makes a lot of sense.
Yeah, it helps a lot.
Is there anything, any other major changes in here other than just simplification and clarifications? That, I mean, there's a lot here. And there's a lot that's been, you know, crossed out and different things, but mostly, is it, what's the significant? What's the significant changes that we've seen?
Yeah, so for the, this particular Clear and Objective Standards project and this particular part of Article Four, there really are no significant changes. We're not eliminating uses or adding uses. It's really locating things to the tables and trying to simplify the format and unify the nomenclature. So when we get to Item Four on the agenda, where we talk about the housing amendments, that's a separate project, related but separate. And there are a lot more actual changes there that are pretty, some may say significant.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions or comments about Clear and Objective Standards? Hearing none. We will then move on to Item Number Three, which is a discussion about FEMA and some floodplain development issues and topics that we have coming up that will be of importance to the county, both incorporated and unincorporated. So Rebecca, if you'd go ahead and start that PowerPoint, please. Thank you, and you can go to the next slide. So tomorrow night as well, we're going to do the same presentation to the Board of Commissioners. They also had a very similar presentation at the elected officials' meeting on July 11th out at the Fairgrounds. But in the past several months, there have been three different federal actions that have come down to Clatseton County and other areas that, within the state, and in some cases nationwide, that are going to have some fairly significant impacts on how people can develop their properties within a floodplain. So the three things that we're going to talk about briefly today are changes at the federal level to something called Federal Flood Risk Management Standards, FFRMS. There are some new draft flood risk maps that have been released by FEMA for the Columbia River Estuary, covering basically from the Skipponon River over to Tongue Point. And then, an update on the FEMA Biological Opinion or BIAP implementation. Next, and next, please. All right, so the Federal Flood Risk Management Standards came out of an executive order that was signed in 2015. It got revoked in 2017 and then reinstated in 2021. And what it says, that executive order, is basically that any time a federal agency uses federal funds or a private person uses federal funds to develop in a floodplain, that they have to do the most that they can to reduce the risk. Because obviously, this is taxpayer money that is being used to build in a hazard area. And so the intent, I think, is to be as frugal and careful with their money as they can. So in June of this year, or sorry, in April of this year, Housing and Urban Development, the same federal agency that works with the FHA-backed mortgages and loans, announced their new rules about how they're going to implement this requirement, this executive order. And so, if you go to the next slide, please. So what HUD and all the federal agencies are going to be doing is they have basically taken FEMA's flood map and they've expanded the floodplain area. So you may be next to a floodplain area right now, but out of it. But if you were to use HUD money and try to develop your property, there's a possibility that you might be in HUD's floodplain. And when you are in that area, you have to build now higher than you normally would under our code. So our code right now says you have to build one foot above base flood. Under the HUD changes, if you're using FHA-backed loans or mortgage, you have to be two feet above the base flood elevation. And so this applies not only to housing projects that are funded through HUD, but if you've got a mortgage and you're looking to buy a home that was constructed within the past 12 months, that home either has to be elevated two feet above the base flood elevation, or you may not be eligible to get that loan. And so that becomes effective on January 1st of next year. The reason I bring it to everyone's attention is, A, there are likely to be people who, in the county, who are going to be impacted by this. The second reason I bring it up is because, how are we going to implement this? We typically don't ask people if they have a mortgage when they come in to build a house, and we certainly don't ask what type of mortgage. One option is to change the code and just put this special caveat in, or maybe just an information sheet, but then we have no way to enforce that. And what we don't want to do is give people incorrect information, and then they end up not being able to get the mortgage for their home. So just things to think about that we'll be working through along with some of these other FEMA issues. But you'll be seeing some code changes, likely in October or November at a public hearing here for the Planning Commission. So when you see these things come up, you'll at least have some background on them. And so not only has HUD done this, FEMA just announced their rules, which will really only affect projects that are getting FEMA loans, like resiliency loans, building resilient infrastructure communities, the brick brands and things. But eventually, every federal agency is going to have to go through this process and develop rules. And we'll see how that plays out for the county. So I'll pause there for that one and see if there are any questions about this particular set of regulation changes.
So, a lot of our county land is dyke land, protected by dykes. And how does that, I mean, how does that affect their maps? And you know that there's lots of areas that you require to be two feet higher than their base flood elevation. They're in effect, no longer developable for any type of housing. So how do the dykes play into that? And does dyke certification have anything to do with any? Does it even matter?
I don't think so much for the expanded floodplain that changes. It does matter in terms of FEMA's flood insurance rate maps, the draft maps we'll talk about next. And if the dykes and the levees are not certified or accredited, it's as if they don't exist. So Warrenton is working through this issue right now, where they have some areas that received partial credit for some dykes and things during the last map update. But that accreditation has either expired or not been completed. And so in the draft maps that we'll talk about, FEMA is looking at that area as completely unprotected. And that does have an impact, because obviously, then, you may be required to get flood insurance. If you come in for a permit to add on to your house, then you've got to meet different regulations, things like that.
Well, it could potentially require everybody who's in that zone to get flood insurance if they have a mortgage.
Yeah.
Which could double, triple, quadruple their amount of insurance.
Yeah.
What's significant?
Yeah.
I don't know that there is, there's not, I don't know that there's a district in this county that isn't certified or whatever by the Corps, is there?
I am not sure. I would have to check. I think there may be one, but I could be wrong. But I can check on that.
I was just curious.
Yeah.
Know where we live, it's not.
So it's as if they don't exist, if not. Who certifies them? And?
I believe the Army Corps.
Yeah, Corps of Engineers.
They have a process that they come in and they measure everything and they look at them and make sure that they're adequate and withhold a certain other events or whatever. To certify them, I suppose.
Yeah, the compliance part of it is, their standards are one thing. I think the compliance part is what the challenge is. They require a pretty intensive inspection schedule. And that's where a lot of these smaller districts, and I assume probably even, including Warrenton, have a hard time meeting their standards for that. So the construction of it might be okay, but you don't, you know, if you're not able to meet the ongoing inspection standards, then I don't care.
Any other thoughts or questions about this particular set, the Federal Flood Risk Management Standards?
So as far as this goes, it is only FHA mortgages that are affected by this piece?
Yes, yep.
Which is a large percentage of mortgages.
It's a very big, yeah.
What percent overall, but.
Okay, Rebecca, if we can go on. And we've talked about this. So, next one? And next slide, yep. Okay, so this, the next section deals with the draft flood insurance rate maps that FEMA has released. They're actually, at this point, flood risk maps. And you can see from the timeline that this is something that has been ongoing here in the county since 2009. And it started with some mapping, and then there were more revisions and a lot of discussion about how the model was and being used and how the model was prepared. And so finally, we have gotten to this point here where now, in April of this year, we had a meeting with FEMA and the local elected officials and staff to go over those draft maps. Next slide, please. So the area that is impacted, as I said, is basically running from up in the Hammond area down along the bay and over to Tongue Point. Next slide, please. We can skip that. So this is the map that we currently have in place today. And if you follow that link that Rebecca just had up, you can actually go to the interactive map on FEMA's website and toggle back and forth and look at the changes. But you can see right now that there's a big swath along the Columbia River that's in yellow, and that is a D-zone. And that's an area that FEMA had not previously studied. The blue area are areas that are in the 100-year floodplain. And then the green areas are in an A-zone that does not have a base flood elevation that's been established yet. So if you go, and the purple, sorry. The purple, you'll see right now along the coastline, that's the velocity zone where you get the wave action flooding. Next slide, please. Okay, so this is what is being proposed. You can see that they've done some studying along the Columbia River. You can see that the purple areas here in Hammond, Warrenton, and along the Astoria shoreline on the river have all been added into the velocity zone before they were in that unstudied area. And you can also see, if you go back one slide, okay, take a look at Warrenton, especially on the west side of Warrenton, and then go forward again, please. That whole section is being added in to Warrenton. And part of that is due to the lack of accreditation for the dykes and levees over there. But, next slide, please. So overall, what FEMA estimates is that in the unincorporated area, we will see a net change of four units. We are basically, I didn't read this over. So we're taking out, in Clatseton County, we are taking 34 structures out of the floodplain, but we are adding in 38. So we are gaining four additional structures. Similar numbers for the city of Astoria, they're taking out 25, adding 28. But if you look at the city of Warrenton, they're removing 21 structures, but they're adding 1,047. And that is about double what they are currently at right now. So it's a big change for Warrenton, and understandably, they are very concerned about it. So that's, go ahead.
That doesn't take into account vacant land?
Right.
Actual structures.
Right, these are structures. So when we say "structure," it doesn't necessarily mean a house. It could be an accessory structure. So just to be clear about that. But they will be adding over 1,000 more structures potentially into that. Next slide, please. And then along the coast, where the velocity zone is, that wave action area, again, will be adding one structure in unincorporated area. Astoria is adding 46, and none of that will apply to Warrenton, which was probably good news for them. Next slide, please. So what FEMA anticipates as the timeframe to move forward with this is that, beginning in March next year, they're going to release these draft maps to the public for comment. And then, following that, there's a series of open houses and public outreach events that FEMA is required to conduct. And then, at some point, we will have to make decisions about whether or not to adopt these maps. If we choose not to, then we risk being out of compliance with the flood insurance program and not being able to have our residents obtain flood insurance and not be eligible for emergency funding did we need it. So most likely, that's probably not a path forward, if we think about it. The last time we went through this process was right when I started, in 2018. And even at that point, the changes were only along the coastline. A lot of properties were removed, and it was still somewhat contentious. So this will be a much bigger series of meetings. But they anticipate that probably sometime in either late 2025 or early 2026, these maps will become effective.
So this was an executive order that was revoked in 2017. Is it possible that it's revoked again? So this was an executive order that was revoked in 2017. Is it possible that it's revoked again? And then what happens if it is revoked? Because will some of this still be ongoing, or does it just go away?
I don't know for certain, but I would expect that if the executive order is revoked, then these things would also be revoked, or the requirement to have them would be revoked. And it may depend on what the executive order says. I don't know. Okay, next slide, please. All right, so were there any questions about the new draft flood maps?
More concerns.
So this is actually compounding. We are going from the, what I'll say is the top of the pyramid, the tiniest thing, with the two-foot elevation if you've got an FHA-backed mortgage. And they've expanded the floodplain to the new flood map plus the expanded floodplain. And now we're going to talk about what's really, I see as the foundation of this, where all those little changes, the two-foot here, the new flood map, is all going to play into this biological opinion update. And this is, this is the one that's going to hurt the most.
So we got the good news first.
Yeah, I did it the other way around for the elected officials meeting, but I thought this made more sense. Next slide, please. Okay, so we're going to skip over all the terms except the one in red. The PICOM, Pre-Implementation Compliance Measure. That's the one that we're going to spend some time talking about today. And we'll spend some time with the board tomorrow talking about. There's actually a meeting going on right now where FEMA is trying to distribute information. That, I listened to one two weeks ago. They didn't have a lot of information to give. So we're still operating a little bit in the dark. Next slide, please. So I'm gonna, we'll go to the next one. You don't need all the background about biological opinion. Actually, flip back one, please. So every jurisdiction in the county participates in the National Flood Insurance Program. And we all have really since 1978, '79. I didn't put the number in here, but I forget how many thousands of flood insurance policies there are in the county and how many millions of dollars of property that they protect. But, so it is a big impact. It's not just a few isolated properties. Next slide, please. And we'll skip that one, too. So this is the area in Oregon where the biological opinion is going to be implemented. The biological opinion, or BIOP, is a result of a 2009 lawsuit that Portland Audubon brought against the services and FEMA for not measuring the impacts of the flood insurance program on endangered species. And that's the whole crux of where this came from. And so after a lot of negotiation and litigation and review, in 2016, the fisheries issued, or the services issued a biological opinion that said the flood insurance program was endangering 16 species of fish and the orca whale. And so as a result of that, FEMA now has to develop standards that communities will implement in order to be consistent with Endangered Species Act. So as you can see, it's almost, well, maybe not almost all the state, but a very significant portion of the state. I think it touches 33 of the counties out of 36. So very few counties are not going to be impacted. Next slide, please. And so here in Clasip County, the area that's engraved are the areas that are outside the special flood hazard area. And then you can see where we basically saw on the other map, the blue areas, the yellow areas, and then along the coastline and down along the Halem River is where we're going to be most impacted. Next slide, please. Okay, so as part of doing this process and coming into compliance with the Endangered Species Act, FEMA submitted in 2023 for NEPA review, the National Environmental Protection Act review. And at that time, they had made a commitment that said until that process was completed, communities did not have to implement the standards needed to be compliant. And suddenly, in June of this year, that changed. And June 6th, FEMA made an announcement that said we're going to make a formal announcement on July 15th. July 15th, actually 16th, we got the letter from FEMA that said you will now need to pick one of these three pre-implementation compliance measures, the PICOMs. And so we have three choices as a community. We can either choose to prohibit all new development in the floodplain. We can either adopt a model ordinance that incorporates the Endangered Species Act requirements into our code. Or we can require every applicant to perform their own habitat assessment to verify that their project will not cause a net loss of habitat and function in the floodplain and wetland areas. So none of those is simple or easy, or maybe in many cases palatable. And so we have to choose one of these three and implement by December 1st of this year. So part of the concern is FEMA still has not released the model ordinance. FEMA still has not released the Habitat Assessment Guidebook to help people put together a habitat assessment. So if we don't do anything, we will automatically default on December 1st to requiring everyone to do their own habitat assessments. In order to do all those, we're going to have to do a lot of code amendments. We're going to have to send out mailers to everyone who's going to be affected by the ordinance. So all the property owners within the special flood hazard area. And it's going to be, we expect, very restrictive, based on some of the very early ideas FEMA was tossing out in 2018 or so. For example, 170-foot buffer along streams and rivers and lakes. If you want to subdivide property that's all in a floodplain and there's no area outside of the floodplain, then you would not be allowed to subdivide. So based on that, we expect there's going to be some pretty significant changes that are headed our way that will really impact how and where you can develop in a floodplain, if you can develop at all. You may be required to do compensatory storage. You may have to do mitigation. And both of those can be expensive. And so until FEMA releases those model ordinances and things, we just don't know exactly what we're going to have to do. And that's worrisome because we have to do something by December 1st. So, and then the other part of that is that effective August 1st, FEMA has put a moratorium on reviewing letters of map revision based on fill. And so if you had intended to raise up your properties so that your pad where you're building your house was above the base flood elevation and getting that area removed from the flood hazard area by FEMA, they are not processing those applications right now. That's where that one is. Let's see, next slide, please. And so FEMA does have two more meetings coming up. There's one on Thursday from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. There's one on August 21st, beginning at 12:30. And links to that are in your package on the fact sheet that FEMA put out. It's got all those links there so you can attend those meetings. But again, the timeline right now, we have to adopt and implement by February, December 1st. We have new reporting requirements that will take place. We begin collecting data in January 2025 about numbers of trees removed, volume of fill, acres of wetlands reconnected or disconnected. And there's two or three other things we have to begin collecting data on. So there's going to be a lot more on staff. We're going to be asking a lot more of applicants who, you know, sometimes are not, people who are familiar with the development process and aren't familiar with floodplain issues. But we are not going to have a choice but to ask them a lot more questions and be more stringent in how we permit things. I mean, we try to be as flexible as we can, but with the new requirements that are coming in, we're not going to have a lot of leeway. And then FEMA currently expects that all of this will be fully done and implemented sometime in 2027. Uh, next slide, please. All right. Oh, yeah, so one thing to think about. This was not in your packet because I added this in later. But we are now going to be in a position where we're going to have to adopt higher standards. And there is a program out there. It's called the Community Rating System, CRS. Ironically, it's a FEMA program. But if you have a jurisdiction that has higher standards than the minimum national requirements, you can get a discount for your ratepayers by doing basic things. Public outreach is one of them. And the state actually has looked at this. If any of you remember Noah Hendrickson, or Noah Hendrickson, Carl Hendrickson, the Noah fellow who held some meetings out in Brown's Mead and Miles Crossing and everything, he looked at it. He thinks that just with the code we have today, we could probably be eligible for a 5% discount on flood insurance if we were to go into the program. There is some staff time required, but just from my perspective, I think that if we are in a position where we're having to tell property owners you have to do more, that there should be as much as we can, maybe a corresponding benefit by enrolling in this program. So it's just something to think about. I wanted to throw it out there and just make sure everybody knew about it. That's future discussion, but, uh, next slide, please. And then you're not the board, but these are the questions that we're going to ask the board tomorrow night. You know, basically, which route do you want to go? Prohibit development, adopt the model ordinance, put the burden on the property owner? And then maybe some discussion about if we are going to have to raise our fee because we are going to have extra reporting requirements and data collection that are going to be needed. We're going to have additional review of permits above and beyond what we do today. And then just present the same information about the community rating system option to the board just to get some initial thought about it. Next slide, and that's it. Every time I give this presentation, there's silence in the room and everybody is just weeping tears.
Just disturbing. Some of this stuff is coming straight down from top, literally, executive order. Yeah, it's a lot to take in right now because it has such significant impacts for pretty much across the county. I mean, thousands of people are affected by this. I'm not really sure what, where to go from here. But I do have a question about FEMA and how it works. And if this is a nationwide, must be a nationwide effort. And how does it work specifically in Oregon? Does Oregon have its own board that's working on this specific lawsuit issue to try to solve that part of it? Or who makes the decisions when it comes to just our state? And who's appointed to that? How do they get appointed to that? And do they have delegation or they have meetings that people can attend?
Yeah, those are good questions. Most of them I do not know the answer to. FEMA is divided into 10 regions nationwide, so we're FEMA Region 10. And that includes Alaska, Washington, Oregon, and I believe Idaho, I think are the four that are in there. My understanding is Washington has been through a similar process, Washington State, and had to go through this. And they, I don't know where they're at in their process. My understanding also is that this is eventually going to be rolled out across the country. That's something that I'm hearing consistently, is that this is not just going to be an Oregon-specific thing or Pacific Northwest. It's going to be nationwide at some point. In terms of who sits on FEMA and if there's a board and things like that, that I don't know. But I can look into that and see if I can find some more information. I do also know that two meetings ago, three meetings ago, the Board of Commissioners did vote to join the Tillamook Coalition, which is a group of property owners, businesses, I'm trying to think who else is on there, that are looking closely at the implementation of the BIOP. And if needed, they're willing to pursue litigation. So I know that the board did four-to-one recommend that the county join that. So I think that paperwork is in the process with the county manager's office.
So I have a question on the term no net loss. So we're in a floodplain, and a floodplain only floods during certain events. So how do you calculate no net loss? And what does that no net loss mean?
Yeah, so it covers three things. And Rebecca, I don't know if you can flip back to my presentation. But when they say no net loss, they're talking about the functions of the wetlands. Stop, stop, stop. Back up, back up. Right, stop, okay. So they're looking at flood storage, so the capacity. Are you filling in wetlands and floodplain areas? Whoa, no, I can't read it. They're looking at water quality, so impacts that you would have from adding new impervious surface. And then riparian habitat, which would be removing vegetation that's not invasive, near rivers and streams and things. So that's how they're measuring it or the components of it that they want measured.
So is it possible to do any type of development with no net loss on a piece of vacant land?
Since I am not an engineer, I can't answer that. But yes, I think that you probably could. So the way, if you look there, to achieve no net loss, the first, and FEMA preferred emphasis, is to basically avoid the impact and prohibit development. The second is to minimize it, so that would be where the larger buffer areas come in. And then if you can't do, you can't avoid it and you can't minimize it, then you have to mitigate for it. And that's where you would see compensatory storage come in. But in terms of how you?
Can you explain the compensatory storage?
So basically, if I fill up an acre of wetlands, I have to create compensatory storage at presumably an equal amount somewhere else. Probably within the same watershed.
That's something that, like, has been done before with like a mitigation bank, where we maybe as a county create some wetlands that could be used for mitigation purposes? So someone can fill this area, but we've already developed or created wetlands somewhere else?
So we don't know yet because we haven't seen the model ordinance. We don't know what will be allowed. I know that, coming from Florida where the water table is very low and everything's a wetland, we had a lot of compensatory storage requirements. And it was basically, if you're going to fill in this wetland, you're going to dig a retention pond over here to compensate or something along those lines. But again, until we see the model ordinance, we just don't know how bad it will be. I mean, we just really don't. I'm kind of pitching the worst-case scenario. It could be worse than this. It could be a lot better. I don't know. So the board, hopefully, even though they have not seen the model ordinance, will be able to maybe give us some direction tomorrow so that we can be in a position where we can be in compliance by December 1st. That's the goal. At this point, since we haven't seen anything from FEMA, I don't know if we're going to make that deadline. If we can't implement by December 1st, then everybody will automatically be defaulted to the habitat assessment. And we'll see how that works.
Is there a possibility for asking FEMA for an extension? I mean, I think that'd be the first thing, very short timeline, especially being they haven't done their part.
Yeah, so there are two more meetings, and I'm signed up for the other two. And that will be one of the questions, depending on what comes out of those meetings. So we'll see. But, yeah, they're pushing hard. So then, again, depending on the direction and the timing of everything, we anticipate that we would bring something back to the Planning Commission. We had hoped in October, but at this point, it may be November. I don't know. We'll see. We may have to call a special meeting if we need to really get this done by December 1st because the board only meets once in November, once in December.
What is that? I mean, obviously, you have to have the draft ordinances. But as far as updating the codes go, is it, does it have to be in each different zone? Or can you have just one section that's an asterisk? Okay, if you're in a floodplain, these are the rules everyone has to be?
Yeah, it's the last one. Article five, which we'll be looking at next month, that has all our floodplain regulations in it. So it's only one section of code, which is good. It's just making sure we get. It's just making sure we get everything in. And then, it goes to Planning Commission for one hearing, and then two public hearings with the board. If they adopt it as an emergency ordinance, it can go into effect immediately. Otherwise, it's typically a 30-day period. And then, because it is land use-related, it can be appealed to Luba, and that could hold things up as well. So just as a kind of closing remark, we have been working with Public Affairs to put out information about this. So it's trickling out right now, but in the next week or two, you'll probably be seeing a lot more coming out. And I know the historian did an article about it a few weeks ago. Let everybody know it's coming. So there are no other questions about this, and I'm depressed everyone. Well, we'll move on to hopefully a happier topic. So way back in October of last year, the board directed staff to start working on a package of amendments that would help to facilitate housing construction at all prices and price points. And we have been through a couple of work sessions with the board. We held a public information session on January 17th. And then, we published the first draft of the proposed changes on June 1st with a comment period that closed on July 21st. And then, last week, we went back to the board, and the board gave us the go-ahead to move forward with the public hearings for this. So you will be seeing this come to your Planning Commission in October. And Rebecca, if you could pull up the PowerPoint, please? So really, what we're looking to do is, and if you go to the next slide, please. And you can go on from there. Okay. Oh, this is an old one, I gave you the wrong one. Okay, but anyway. So what we're looking to do is primarily focused in the rural communities. So that would be Arch Cape, Shepherd's Garden, Mile Crossing, Westport, Napa Swenson. And then, they have their own set of parameters that are in the Oregon Administrative Rules that tell us, you know, basically that we have the ability to have higher densities in these rural communities. We have a little bit more latitude. When we talk about the RA 1 to 5 zones, we talk about coastal residential. They're considered rural residential, which is different than rural community. And they have a different set of rules. Rural residential has that 2-acre minimum lot size under state statute. And so they, there are very few changes we can make to the rural lands at this point to encourage housing construction. So you'll see that a lot of the changes are focused in the rural communities. And they're primarily focused on, where possible, decreasing lot sizes. We are introducing several different types of housing products that are currently not addressed in our code, so triplex, quadplex, cottage clusters. We are looking to change the process for some of these types of housing to make it simpler. So for example, a duplex, instead of having a conditional use, 10-day public comment period, $1,200 application fee, to change that to a Type 1, so it's basically $85 permit from planning, basically an over-the-counter permit, no public hearing. Triplex, quadplex, multifamily, cottage cluster would still be conditional uses because they are more dense compared to what's in a lot of these existing neighborhoods where, you know, it's almost all single-family. So we do want to have that extra level of review. So, yeah, that covers that part. What else are we looking to do? I did not bring my changes with me. Simplify process wherever possible. Allow employee housing in commercial and industrial zones, because we hear a lot about, you know, housing crisis. And so this would give a business owner the opportunity to put employee housing on his or her property. Also allow multifamily in commercial zones, so that you could have either a standalone multifamily building, or that you could have some sort of mixed use where you've got retail or something on the front or downstairs, and then you could do residential on top or behind the commercial building. Make it easier to construct a unit onsite for an owner or manager of a business. Right now, it's a conditional use, and so we want to change that to a Type 1. We want to also change rooming houses, boarding houses to a Type 1. There are Type 2 right now. Same thing with manufactured home parks and, what else? Multifamily. If you're in a multifamily zone, we have basic parameters that are clear and objective. We have clear setbacks, we have clear building heights, we have clear parking requirements. The county doesn't have design guidelines, so there's no architectural review. So I think that putting that, if you're in a multifamily zone, having multifamily buildings would just be a problem. So that's what's being proposed. As you saw in your packet coming out of the comment period, we received maybe about 30 or so comments, almost all primarily from people from Arch Cape and Cove Beach. ORCA, the Oregon Coastal Alliance, did send in comments for all of, all the different areas of unincorporated counties. But at this point, we are drafting the final, or draft 2 of the amendments. We're submitting to Department of Land Conservation and Development this week, because we have to give them 35-day notice. We will be running the required ads. There will not be a notice to property owners, because it's not required under state law that we send it, only if we are taking uses away from them or changing their zoning. So in this case, there's no Measure 56 notice. And then, again, we will be bringing this to the Planning Commission in October, so you can review it and make a recommendation to the board before they have their hearings. And I just wanted to make sure that you were aware of it, aware that it was coming, why it was coming, and what it's intended to do. And if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer those.
Would this be the time to incorporate those, like, lot size requirements?
Yep, I made a note on my-
Okay. Is that something that has to go to the state for their review as well?
So once the board adopts the ordinance, if they go that route, we have to send it to the, to do what's called an acknowledgment. So either they will look at it and say, "Yes, we acknowledge, and it's compliant with statewide planning goals," or they will challenge it and possibly run it up the appeal system. Or they may, I don't know, if they can just send it back and say, "We want some changes," but-
So you mentioned Measure 56. What, which one was, is that the, what's that?
Yeah, so Measure 56 is a requirement that, if you've ever gotten one of those postcards from the county that says, "Notice of land use action, this may affect the value of your property." That's a Measure 56 notice. It's intentionally scary. We'll send them out for the FEMA stuff. But basically, the state law says that every time a government changes a rule, that will either change the zoning of someone's property, or we are taking uses away from someone, then we are required by state law to send a Measure 56 notice. It was, there was actually a voter action that made this requirement happen, so.
Does that come after Measure 37? Was that-
Yeah, so 37, 49, Measure 49, deal with the changes that were made at the state level to require larger parcel sizes for resource lands. And so that resulted, to avoid the takings, there were a lot of claims, and then, you know, you could build three houses here, or whatever.
So when it, when we talk about takings, does that have, does that come into play with any of this FEMA regulations?
Very potentially it will. And that has been a repeated question at every FEMA meeting I've attended, and nobody can answer it, except that, you know, local juris, it's going to be the local jurisdiction who will have to deal with it.
Does this, I mean, to me, it's, looks like it has some serious potential for takings that you could, you know, you could do something at one point with your property, and now, through regulation, you can't.
Yep.
So, I don't know how that comes into play, nobody does.
Yeah. No, it's going to be interesting. And for example, I talked to somebody yesterday who owns property on Clover Road in Miles Crossing, and they want, it's a planted subdivision, but now they want to possibly further partition it. It's all floodplain, so they can't provide any land outside of the floodplain. So they, that whole area would be impacted. You want to expand ag bag, you better do it now. You thought it was hard last time.
Yeah, it's crazy.
It's going to be a lot harder.
Well, can you go back to that for a second, though? You were saying that FEMA's going to come out with whatever they come out with, all secret, but-
Yes.
But you're saying the local governments will be the ones who'll have to deal with the claims?
Because, so, it's a sick and twisted piece of logic, but it's almost brilliant. So FEMA says, "If you want to participate in the national flood insurance programs, you have to implement these minimum standards." Okay? But then, when a jurisdiction adopts that, those standards are not FEMA regulating land use. They are the jurisdiction regulating land use. But we have to do that in order to get flood insurance. So it's an interesting semantic play.
You say, "No." You say, "No, we just don't feel like we can meet that." That just means that nobody can get flood insurance.
And we don't qualify for emergency assistance. That's even bigger, given where we live.
So what does that do? You cannot acquire, because your jurisdiction did not, is not part of the program, and you have an existing home, have a mortgage on, but that mortgage is in a floodplain, but you can no longer acquire flood insurance. What happens?
I don't know.
Well, you can buy, I mean, you can get flood insurance out of the, you know, out of the national program. You go to Lloyd's or somebody like that, but astronomical, I mean, it's- But there's still, there's still another program, it's just not federally backed. Right. And you can't afford it. Yes. This is how you see it.
All right, so unless there's more questions about housing or FEMA, we can move on. Anybody online have any questions?
Thank you, guys. I don't have any questions. Just really appreciate the information.
Yeah, you're welcome. All right, so for our August project status report, I think we added in some new projects that I'll talk about a bit more as we get into the Director's Report. But really, it's, we've got three ordinances coming, or, yeah, potential ordinances coming in related to the Army Corps and the dredging in the Columbia River. And then, we will be having psilocybin coming up probably in October as well. And then, depending on how the FEMA stuff plays out, we'll probably be adding that in next week or next month for your report. But that is really there, if anybody has any questions about the project status report. And hearing none. Okay, so Director's Report. Seems like this month, there was a lot going on. We did get the three applications in from the Army Corps. One is for a Goal 16 exception for the dredging out there, and then some text and map amendments that would go along with that. Next month, we will present the information that Meg Reed presented, since we have two new people on our Planning Commission, just to talk about what a goal exception is, how that process will work, and why we're doing it. We're not going to talk about the actual Army Corps case itself, but just, again, the process and what a goal exception is, and just make sure everybody is comfortable and knowledgeable of the language that we're going to be using and the process we're going through. And then, in October, we will actually bring the three ordinances to you for a public hearing. So that was one big thing. Again, psilocybin, the board decided that they didn't want to go back to a referendum or put a referendum on the ballot, so we're going to be going with time, place, manner regulations. And we will be bringing those to the board on September 4th for a first review. And then, depending on their feedback, we will most likely be bringing that for a public hearing to the Planning Commission in October. The Child Care Barriers Work Group continues to look at solutions for childcare. We have another meeting on September 13th, and that's virtual on DLCD's YouTube channel. The Economic Opportunities Analysis, we have a technical advisory committee, meeting at 10:00 a.m. this Thursday. That's a virtual meeting, and the link is on our website, and you can do that. We are also working with Goals 16, 17, and 18 to schedule a public virtual meeting towards the end of August. And then, I believe, on September 14th, out at Napa School, we're going to have a public open house out there. And then, there will be a second technical advisory committee, probably, I would guess, sometime right after Labor Day. The Housing Task Force, we had a very good presentation back on July 24th from Sean Edging. He is with Department of Land Conservation and Development. He's a senior housing planner. And talked to us quite a bit about the Oregon Housing Needs Analysis and how that will be rolled out and implemented. And so, the Oregon Housing Needs Analysis, or ONA, is something that came out of, I think, House Bill 2001 a few years ago. And what it does is, it basically establishes a process where every jurisdiction in the state, cities and counties, are basically presented with an allotment of housing supply that they are missing in their communities. And for cities over 10,000, this is going to be mandatory process in how they deal with it. Jurisdictions less than 10,000, it's, as I understand it, voluntary process, but you still are being given these numbers, I guess, so you have an idea of what underproduction is occurring in your community and what future needs are projected to be. But there is a lot of rulemaking that goes into this, and their most updated numbers are going to be released in September. And at that point, we'll, we'll see what kind of deficit class of county and the cities are in. But that will be interesting to see. There's also ongoing work with the regional grant that the county and the cities got to do some of this background work in terms of buildable lands for housing, so that's in the process of being updated as well. Um, let's see. Okay, so I put an item in here, not to scold anyone, but mainly because we do have, as you see on the next page, several big-ticket items coming up for public hearings in October, anywhere between September and February of next year. And so I just wanted to emphasize that, as much as we can, I know that we, you all have businesses, and you have jobs and families, and, you know, we get sick. But just to really encourage that, as we move into the fall and the winter, that you can really be focused as much as you are able to be at these meetings, so we can have quorums and keep, keep these legislative pieces moving forward. And then, finally, short-term rental caps. Oh, my gosh. The board will be doing another work session on September 25th. This time, they will actually be reviewing a draft ordinance that will look at a proposed cap of either 7% or 10% on short-term rentals. And then, based upon direction at that work session, we will either go forward with public hearings, or we will go back and continue to revise the ordinances. And that is my report. Any questions or comments?
Can you tell us where we're at on our, on the percentage right now of the, on short-term rentals?
So right now, the county, I think at last count, had 175 in the unincorporated area. And so some, some areas, Arch Cape, for example, they're maybe, I don't want to say the exact number, maybe between 20% to 30% of their area. Cove Beach, I think, was around 30%. Other areas are significantly under 1%, others are 7%, 5%. So we are basically basing the methodology or the proposed cap on each zone, rather than just a flat across the county, 10%. Because where we see the activity is west of 101 and on the east side of 101 in Arch Cape. So that's really where the caps are probably needed. And so we are just going zone by zone. And then, every year, as the tax roll is updated and new structures, dwellings come online, then that would, you know, possibly raise the numbers- then that would, you know, possibly raise the number of short-term rentals. So if you have 100 structures today and you've got 10% and you can have 10 short-term rentals, but next year, five, 10 more structures get built, so now you can have 11 rentals, you know, that will change. In the areas where they're over, nobody gets a new short-term rental period until they're below that cap level.
But they remain, they get remained in place?
Yeah, as long as they keep it renewed and, you know, don't do anything to get their permit revoked, you know, like major life safety issues or something.
Will, will that, is that something that comes to us at all or does that go straight to the board?
That one will go straight to the board because we put all those regulations in the county code and so it's not considered land use, it's business licensing or regulation. But I just wanted to keep you informed because I know that's often a point of interest for people's constituents. And that is everything I had. I'm very tired of talking. I appreciate Christopher R. so much more.
Well, thank you for running the meeting. I was great.
You're welcome.
Um, yeah, hopefully, it's a lot easier when everybody's here in person. Have a better discussion that way. Nice if we could be here. I know it's not possible all the time, so, you know, I'll probably likely have to phone in or, or come online myself at some point, so. But there's a lot coming up, so hopefully we can all be here.
Yep, even if by Zoom.
Even if by Zoom, that's right. And we will need to appoint a vice chair, uh-
Yeah, that was the other discussion. I think we may want to, yeah, look at having an election for vice chair and then usually we would do it in January, but I think at this point, we probably need to do that.
All right.
All right, anything else for the good of the order? Nope. All right, we are adjourned. Thank you.
Thanks.